Right here, I was stopped in the way to the meeting by Mrs. Robert Hammond, who was attending a school function for her daughter who they were unable to attend. She handed me this letter and asked me to read it aloud and then submit it to the council. Councilman and mayor, I am unable to attend the meeting tonight due to a prior commitment. I am expressing some concerns that I am seeing in town. We want to beautify this community according to this last election and what our constituents have said. We still have many abandoned vehicles that are still present in town that nothing has been done with since my husband brought the pictures out. There is still the Ford Ranger sitting behind the elevator with no plates. Then there is also the fact that the council was all on the bandwagon to get a dump truck down to Lawrence Swol's house to get rid of his junk, which is still there. Yet, has anyone paid attention to the Hobbit place? There is lots, lots of stress of junk cars and trash all over that place. Do you think you are going to get someone to buy it that way? We send out letters over and over, yet all people do is throw them away. Is there anything that actually gets done? Now, let's move on to the abandoned properties in town. I've taken it upon myself to do research and contacted some of the state officials to help maybe get things moving with those. To be quite frank, Robert is tired of trapping and disposing of these animals himself. Right now, we are working on a family of possums that made their way back between the Brown and White House. And I'm afraid have infested our Blue House. We mow these properties with no recourse to the property owners and have done so for quite some time. Why? People want to beautify this town and it is about time that something actually gets done about and then not just talk, talk, talk. We may not rent our Blue House out, but at least we paint it and mow it and try to take care of it. There is also the Scott Cruz White House by Carrie and Linda Hammond and the other White House, the Anderson House, that no one seems to know who owns. It is time to take action and not just talk. We want beautification. Now, let's make it happen. You may have this copy, I asked her. And so, I'll hand you this copy. And that is verbatim from Carrie Hammond.
Thank you, Charlie, for reading that. A date? Anything else from the public?
You know, I have one thing that's kind of been nagging at me. At the last meeting, Councilman Nelson said he didn't care when I made the comment that the council serves at the consent of those who elect them. And I've been, that's been just galling at me and because the month before... Wait a minute, let me have my say and then, because he asked me, let me have my say here. Last month, when I said that it's been said by no less than the President of the United States that the governance comes by consent of those whom they govern. Abraham Lincoln said it. Everybody learns it in history. You turned your back from me and you said, "I don't care." There were witnesses in here that saw that. The month before, you said, "I don't care about chickens. I don't want to bother with this ordinance because I don't want people thinking every time they get some little problem, they can run down here and get things..."
That's absolutely right.
Yeah. Now, if you're going to vote an ordinance down that you don't even care about simply to discourage public input for governance, are you really doing what you were elected to do?
Well, I think we should go back to this letter right here.
Yeah.
And if you want to beautify Ringstead, clean your yard up because it's a shithole.
Yeah.
Why don't you do it instead of standing up here preaching about...
I ain't preaching. That letter's not for me.
Well, maybe you should clean your yard up. You ever think of that?
You want me to clean it up? Clean it up. You have to remember, I had a good offer of a storage building, get a lot of that crap undecided, and you wanted to put your foot right in the middle of my chest. So before...
Hey, what story did you intercept?
I had a garage give to me that I couldn't put there.
That garage wouldn't hold a third of all the crap you got.
No, that's a story. That's a story. This is my neighbor right here.
I brought, or he's brought. I brought?
He doesn't have that much stuff sitting around outside. You put it together and put it in there, then it's gone.
It never holds even a percentage of all the crap he's got.
What all's he got numbered?
Well, it's sitting all over the place. Hey, you have a problem with me? I don't have, I don't care. That's fine. That's your choice. But don't come and say how we need to beautify the town up when you have one of the worst places in town.
That letter didn't come from me and you know it. I specifically stated who that letter came from.
Yep.
I think you need to recuse yourself of anything dealing with me because you have proven you are hostile to me. You have proven that you are hostile.
But if you're...
You demonstrated it, Dennis. You have demonstrated it.
Okay, let's go. Do we have to put up with this every friggin' month? The public, we have to listen to them? Okay, let's go. Come on. All right. Is that it, Charlie? Marilyn, do you have anything else to add? Okay. Moving on. Item number three, approval of the October 9th council minutes. All right. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Motion to approve? Yep, seconded. Are some of them in favor? All business. All business here we agree. Okay. Moving on to pay bills for payment. Which one are you going to explain to us, Kathy?
Oh, the checks. What? Do you look at the checks?
Yeah. Why is there...
Yeah. Seven oh seventy-four, seven oh eighty-three. What's the deal with... I got a new printer. And my other one, I put my checks in like this and print them. So I put my checks in, but it... You have to turn it.
You put them in upside down, basically.
Yeah, so I had to avoid a bunch. There's a bunch of checks, yeah. And then, then when I have turned it, but then I have to switch the numbers when I turn it. It just got confusing.
What's happening?
No, because we used to do it like way forever and ever, so that's why. So I got a check, see if I avoided those checks for seventy-four to eighty-two. Check it out.
All right.
On Lola Meyer, what are the gift cards for?
I know. Robin asked me that too and it gets confusing. She gets stuff at Amazon. I don't know. I can't explain it. Yeah. And I think instead of her paying it with her Visa, she uses her credit card. And then I get the bill and then I pay her, reimburse her back. But I think Amazon, after they buy so much, you get gift cards. So instead of me paying her...
She's gonna...
Prefer seeing books?
Yeah. Let her explain it at the library.
Item number five, approval of the pay bills. Second to that. Also. Any further discussion? All in favor? Clerk's report. Move on to the clerk's report. Which Dave Olson brought in today?
You do that again.
Yeah. Okay, well, the spelling was...
A little off the wall.
I typed this. I can't type this, but on my book, it's like... I just do this because it's separate from you guys.
Pronounce it phonetically.
We'll see it. We'll see it.
Do you, you know, property taxes were paid. And do you get a report from the treasurer, you know, we were supposed to get forty thousand and we got thirty-four thousand? It's just, you just never know until everybody pays, you know, the delinquent ones. When they finally pay, we get a little, right?
Right.
Yeah, I told you, you can look back and see what we were supposed to get in your budget, you know?
Yeah, exactly.
But...
But then there's some that's carried over from the year before to...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and I just didn't know how that worked with me. Never taken time to analyze it, I should say.
But if there was delinquent, Dan, on where I take the tax of general emergency, I will put it to him.
Okay.
They'll let me know it's delinquent.
Okay, when, so you get a check now in November or December, which area? They'll say delinquent from Davis Nelson or something?
Yeah.
Does it give the customer or not?
No.
Okay, just two hundred dollars delinquent tax or whatever. Okay.
But it could be delinquent from the course six months.
Yeah.
It could still be this year.
It could be from two, three years ago.
Exactly.
You know, you just never know what year. Okay. I don't know how they keep that straight over there. I could take a piece of paper out and take it. Okay. On to the clerk's report. Any further questions? I see you cashed one of the CDs in for the garbage.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we've got, yeah.
And then...
One left. What do I have here? I have one CD invested. The church February twenty-second.
Where'd you see that today at the church?
So that you guys know.
So in the garbage, we have roughly a hundred thousand. Get our hands on it real easy.
Yes.
Hundred seventy-eight.
Yeah, a hundred seventy-eight, yeah.
Okay. This, um, I'll cheat. And it makes sense why we're doing it this way, but boy, it sure is difficult to understand.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, of course.
But it's just, if you just look at, if you just look at the fund and the checking and investments in the very last column, and it tells you how much we have in checking, what we have in money market, you know, what's invested. And then your total is that minus.
Okay. And then the back page is what it goes to.
Yeah, this is the auditor chair that mentioned when he was here that, uh... Yeah, I'm supposed to give you the exact balance. I give you my book balance. But banks don't have outstanding checks, so they actually really have more money in our banking account than what I show you. Like, what, how much am I outstanding? A hundred and eighty bucks? So we have a hundred and eighty more according to the bank than what I tell you according to my books. It's checks I wrote out that month that people have a cash of, yeah. So it's... Yeah, so, so more or less on October thirty-first, the bank says I have more money, but probably by November second, it'll be safe as mine. Probably cashed a couple of days later, you know?
Yep, okay.
Oh, I'm speaking, Kathy.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, I got a call the other day and this gentleman says, "Hey, you remember me?" And I says, "No, I don't." Well, I was there and "May you don't remember me?" And I go, "No, I don't remember you. I'm sorry." He said, "This is Chad." And it's the state auditor. And he's been really busy and stuff and hasn't gotten to my stuff. And so it's been, what, six months? And he said, "So I'm starting to work on your stuff." And so he wanted separate other reports and stuff. And so I called Ben and because what he's auditing isn't a fiscal year. It's part of one fiscal year going into another. And I don't know how to run these reports he wants. So I got all these reports and gave to him and he wanted them. He called me on Thursday and he was going to be in the office Thursday and Friday and he's going to be out all this year. So he's starting to work on it and stuff, but just so that you guys know, he's just been busy with other towns.
Yeah, but he must write enough notes or whatever.
Yeah, and then he scanned a bunch of stuff and I emailed him and, oh, no, he's working for the state.
But I mean, you take the, a lot of it, then it goes back.
Right.
And then go to the next town.
And then go to, exactly. But then, too, sometimes they have problems with towns, just like he was supposed to come and hide me. It wasn't for another two months later, I guess. Sometimes they have things that happen.
Well, when he walks out, does he give you an exit interview?
Yeah.
Tell you where you, where he thinks you are and you should be or...
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, before he leaves, he...
Well, not before. Well, he hadn't, no, he hadn't done anything. He was just more or less, there are some things he noticed that he told me about. That was not a big thing, but said, "I would recommend you do this."
Okay, that's what I mean.
Recommend you do this.
Yeah.
It wasn't really an exit. He was talking during the day. "Hey Kathy, I think maybe you..." da-da-da-da-da, just giving me advice. But now he's doing the audit, audit, where there's certain things I should be doing different.
Right. If I understood it right, when he's all finished and done, I think he'll bring it up here and then he'll go over it with me, I believe.
Well, he said, what he said is, is he was going to come when he was done and come here. It'd be me, the mayor, and then one other person, a councilman.
Sure, I don't want to say that, you know?
Yeah, and then go over everything. But now he just told me on the phone, he says, "Once I get done, Kathy, we'll just have a three-way conference." But he's telling, he's very good at communicating and stuff, so I understand. So before we have the three-way, I will explain.
I don't know. That's a weirdo.
Can you talk like a good guy? Anyway, but I will explain, because he explained everything to me very well. Maybe we should do it this way, Kathy, that way, so that when he listens to them, I'm going to have a form to fucking see.
Okay.
That happy stuff.
That would be nice.
Yeah.
And hopefully he'll send us a report.
Yeah, I'll threaten to. Yeah, I'm sure he will. I'm sure they do that.
Yeah, so, oh, yeah.
It's all good. I'm sure they got to do that even for themselves. So they caught it again this time.
Yeah, and you didn't do item one, two, or three, or whatever.
Exactly.
All right.
Okay.
Approval of the clerk's report. All in favor? City operations with Max Cole?
Uh, last week, we flushed fire hydrants. No surprises. Need to be done.
Were they bad?
Not really. Just normal. Just need to be done.
No surprises.
No, no surprises. Smoke testing, because the weather is not going to get all done this fall. Um, coming up, probably Wednesday or Thursday, we're going to dig up that manhole in your field. I want to get that done before next spring.
Oh, that was what was going on last Friday? Well, there was two trucks, semis sitting along that road there.
Oh, yeah, I won't call. What was that? Was that a lion or...
Oh, yeah, it was a lion somewhere.
Yeah, a lion, yeah.
No, no, that wasn't me.
Or that by Larry.
Yeah.
Yeah. I thought that must be one of them.
No, it wasn't. No, that wasn't me.
Okay.
So they got the hole. It's not received until twenty-three, so they got to load it by the time. Get to the manhole, so. Going to get that done, that one done this week at least, and then the rest will probably be next spring, which is not a big deal. Christmas lights on, I'm trying to get them up this week.
Huh?
They gotta be up. I'm going to be gone next, end of next week, and this week the weather looks good, so I'm going to put up. And I'm working on snow equipment, getting that ready, hope I don't need it. And junk vehicles on the back. Swol's have one pickup down there. It's full of junk. They won't tow it, but it's full of junk. And what do we do about them trailers and our Donny Hobbits? That's the only one we see. I've got response on them for it. What do you guys want to do with them?
Can I make a suggestion on Hobbit? If I sent him, I have to send him a certified letter.
It'll fit in the garage. I talked to Mark Bowden.
Okay, I just was going to say, let's talk to Mark.
And we're just going to push it in the garage. I just haven't had time to...
Because he won't accept that certified letter.
Yeah.
Was he like Jordan Hart and saw?
Yeah.
Yeah, if he wouldn't accept it, I'd have to get a cop to do it.
One of ours to drive down there, probably.
That was the mileage.
Yeah, so that, yeah, Mark will help on that. Yeah.
So I don't know what we do if Lawrence, you know...
What can we do? I mean, this is going to wake up. What can we do?
If we tow it out of his yard, then we have to unload the garbage out of the back end.
Okay.
And then who eats the cost of the garbage?
Well, if I send him a letter, a formal certified letter with a copy of the ordinance, because he got sent, we were working on junk vehicles. We sent out twenty letters to twenty different people and some had one, some had two, some had three cars. Everybody cooperated. We got rid of probably thirty-some junk vehicles.
Right.
And everybody was, would call very cooperative. We had to tow one car away and now we have Lawrence Swol, so we had two out of the thirty-some junk vehicles. So people were very cooperative, I must say. But with Lawrence, now we're talking, we're not talking junk vehi, well, we are talking junk vehicle, but we're talking junk. And that's a complete, separate letter, complete, separate ordinance. If I, I can't send it because he won't accept certified. You know, I'd have to have a cop deliver a letter. Get rid of this, this, this. You've got ten days or we come and we get it. End of story.
All right, well, do it.
Yeah, go for it.
Two days.
Well, I'll read the ordinance.
But then we have to keep that stuff for thirty days.
I told Max that garbage, he's hauling, he hauls over to the landfill. You know, they say you got to keep stuff for thirty days because it might be, you say it's junk, but it's somebody's treasure. But there's no treasure in those black garbage bags. That is garbage. He was, he hauls it to the landfill.
It's too easy to get rid of it.
And I can have him sign a piece of paper if you want to protect yourself. Or he can take that and put it in the garbage truck. Done. He doesn't have to store all those garbage bags for thirty days.
Let's get the process going.
And then I will take it off his water bill.
That's the time I was spending doing this crap.
Huh?
Turn on a garbage bill.
I gotta spend doing this crap and we don't do it for other people.
Right. Well, let's start doing it for other people.
They don't, they don't use it.
What do you mean?
To be honest, people put it out every week and we take, we take it like...
And he's got to start using city bags.
But can we charge him?
Huh?
Can we charge him for any of that?
Yeah, we can charge him, bill him for the extra...
He's going to haul, he's going to weigh all that. He's going to put it in the garbage truck and weigh it. We charge ten cents a pound.
Nickel a pound?
Nickel. Ten cents a pound.
Clusters are charged for time of loading.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
Just do it and put it on his garbage bill.
And then the other junk is, and I got the letter done, uh, this trash bag, cardboard. He's got cardboard in some of the trailers and then he's got tires. I don't know about the cardboard and the bags we can get rid of. Tires, we probably maybe hang on to them.
Open the garage door and throw them back inside.
Somebody will take them for a cost on them.
Those we might have to hold on to for thirty days.
Yeah.
Will you, will you take...
I'll, I'll send somebody a bill, you know?
Yeah, you'll store them for the thirty days? You should make a charge, yeah.
So does he not put garbage out?
No, he hauls it to... And I said, "What do you think they charge you a bag with about two bucks?" I go, "The city garbage bags are cheaper than that. What's our, our..."
He's already paying the minimum.
What do we pay?
One two buck to eight dollars.
Are we eighty by the end of the month?
No.
We're on a big one here, bucks seventy or something.
Yeah. And those ones, they're... They both went up a little.
Thirty dollars for that big bag.
Yeah, probably exactly.
Dollar thirty a bag.
So, but he's getting charged from the city for garbage?
Yeah, I told him, I explained that he gets charged eight dollars a month.
Everything except for plastic bag.
But he's not paying for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, let's get the letter going.
All right, I agree.
And then I'll get Danny's car switched in the garage here.
And then that takes care of the junk vehicles that...
No, I got to quit doing that. I need to move that junk. Legal for me to go down there and back it right up to the, through all that shit, garbage truck or what?
Yes.
On his property?
Yes, and I, yes. I've gone to classes and yes, it says you can...
Trying to cover my place.
I know, right. I know.
You need a sheriff there? Probably, it wouldn't hurt.
It wouldn't hurt.
Get the letter to him then. Yeah, I'm going to call him.
Tell him to bring some gloves so he can help throw garbage.
So these are all taken care of down here?
All taken care of.
These are, those are the new ones, right? Were yours set them on?
Huh?
They all got the current plates on them.
A lot of them, they just, they like...
Oh, I see. Yes.
But then we got, but then we got to take care of, um, what did she say down at, uh... At the co-op, uh... Dale Luther? Oh, yeah, Scott. That she sent the letter, yeah.
So they all be through?
Yep.
Yep, they're even licensed in it and/or legal.
I knew it was a letter, her letter.
Let's say we did.
A lot of them, yeah, they just put them in compliance, so there's nothing really you can do.
They're licensed.
The better you got there, I mean, they got a license. And as much, much you can do.
A lot of them got moved too.
Yeah.
There's a lot of them that are gone.
I can only get two on my third.
At a time.
I think my loader won't listen that high.
I guess, you know, to get a license from Scott, right?
I think it's Scott's bill, anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Anything else for Max?
No.
When you get out of the field, you're going to put snow in it.
It'll be a while. Maybe just leave the corn standing.
There you go.
You talking into that.
That's an option, it looks like. The state will pay for that, you know? We won't pay very much.
That'd be pretty good. Snow, we'll quarter in it. Got a lot of snow though. Be a mess though.
Okay, let's move on to item eight, review proposed ordinance on urban again. For my ordinance. Everybody read the draft ordinance?
I'm sure you guys have read this sausage channel at home. I'm sure you studied it and everything. But there is one change I want to make at the very bottom where it has, um, permit required and you got number one. No person shall raise harbor, keep check with the city without a valid permit obtained from the city clerk. I want to put there with approval by the council under the provision of this chapter. You know, I just feel it should be... Just like you guys told me, feeling like we're building permits to come here for...
I think you should go through here for...
Yeah. Yeah, and get support, get supportive of it, huh?
So everybody's on the same page. I think that's right.
Exactly, exactly. So I was gonna add that.
In other words, I just never dreamt of selling eggs or selling the chickens, you know? Can't raise them to sell the chicken meat or you raise the eggs for your own consumption, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
And there's dimensions there, so they're gonna be so far from the neighbors. What was it, six chickens?
Well, six is, whatever you decide, whatever you decide.
Not in this sample.
That's why I got, yeah, exactly.
So anybody want to make any additions or corrections or?
We didn't fill in a dollar amount.
Yeah.
Are, this is a done deal or?
No. This is just a sample ordinance. If we agree on it, it'll pass. If we don't agree on it, it won't pass. Do we understand it?
Yeah, but as a sample ordinance, it's just nice for the sample to see what people are thinking. If it does, what would the fee be? And then on the back, and I do want to do this for sure, and I, if we do this, I have a permit application if it is passed, and I am going to put on there that the applicant must provide notice to the residents of all immediately adjacent dwellings and applicants intend to obtain a permit. And then also on the permit application, did you contact your neighbors? So I'm gonna have that on.